One Hundred Regular Board Meeting to Order. Mary, may I have a roll call, please?
Yes. Galloway?
Here.
Peyton Howell?
Here.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Rego?
Here.
Ramirez? Ting Poppong?
Here.
Wedeman?
Here. Okay, we have a quorum. If everyone could please rise and join me in deciding.
I pledge.
Redemption to the flag of the United States.
Okay, thank you. James, could you please read our concession, belief, and advice we state?
Well, admission statement cultivate successful passionate learners through rigor, relevance, and relationship. Uh, belief statements, successful passionate learners thrive through championing, engaging learning. Schools and homes collaborate effectively, provide a safe environment. We view social emotional learning into academics and culture. Diversity empowers our learning community and prepares students to fulfill their civic responsibility. The vice and ways, students in all of Fenton High School create a safe, empathetic environment. We believe in each other, respect diversity, communicate openly, grow together and hold each other to high expectations to become believers and invaders of the future.
Okay, thank you, James. Now we move on to one of my favorite parts, the recognitions. James, if you could please take that?
Absolutely. If we, there's some background noise, if we can make sure we turn, uh, we go on mute, folks, so our people who are watching can hear us.
James, can we hold just a moment? We're having an issue with the screen. Thank you.
Okay. So we'll wait.
It's definitely much quieter when everybody is muted.
So Bethany is offline right now? Is that what's going on?
Yeah, he's having his.
No, no, you're online. Hang on.
Okay.
Okay, we should be good.
All right, this evening we have two recognitions for two students, Anna Mykor and Bart Sporna. Both, uh, both recognitions will be videotaped and will be presented back to back. Take it away, Jim.
Oh, my name is Eric George. I'm the director of bands here and I am excited to announce Anna Mykor's state qualification at the ILNDA All-State Convention and the All-State Band. Anna has been working super hard and I'm going to tell you a little about, a little bit about ILNDA and then Anna's performance there. So ILNDA stands for Illinois Music Education Association. And they, every fall they have their district auditions. You can audition for the band, choir, orchestra, jazz, and they, it's a very rigorous audition. It's like applying for college. There's scales, multiple major scales, minor scales, and two very rigorous etudes. You also have sight reading in that audition. So from that moment on, once they take that audition, only the, only the best in each district, all nine districts in the state, are qualified for those honor anthems. Anna earned first year piccolo in District One, ILNDA. So we're very excited about that. And her score on that audition earned her the state qualification, as you can see here. And I, I think, I have to say that I'm not surprised that Anna earns this achievement. Now, Anna works very hard. She is very diligent, she's very conscientious, and I think really even more so, she's very thoughtful about her process and preparation. And she is great technically, and she's also very musical and very creative in her musical life. No, it's really, it's really more like art in that manner, it's a musical art. So we're very proud of her, and Anna should be very proud of herself for this accomplishment.
Hi, I'm Anna and I'm so, so thankful and grateful for all the support I've received throughout my journey of becoming a musician, from my parents and family, from Mr. Ford and Hudson, and from Miss Mary Kristin Stewie. I am so excited to represent Hudson at this school as well and for the future in general. We are so very proud of Bart for being selected to the All-State Honors Horse. The All-State Honors Horse is the top ensemble in the state, and doing that two years in a row in a pandemic is no easy feat. Want to make sure that we thank you, the school board and the administration for being so supportive of the fine arts of Fenton. Thank you to his parents for always supporting him in his followings, his journey, and choir. And of course, thank you to his partners for being so supportive of him in the ensemble. Auditions this fall, it's a little bit different, as everything does. Students from all over the state of Illinois were given two pieces to prepare. They were given sight reading usually, but this year they didn't have to do sight reading, so that was kind of a bust. They did have to do scales and tryouts. When everybody's getting used to learning in a pandemic, these students are meeting with me two, three times a week in the morning to prepare for these auditions. We went above the odds to get ready for them. They even put together a mock audition for me, which they got feedback from, and then resubmitted their auditions to the judges. That one audition is what got Bart all the way to All-State Honors. So I cannot be more proud of Anna and the rest of the students, all their preparation. You really should congratulate yourselves. Congratulations.
Hi, my name is Bart. I'm a senior and I made All-State Honors.
Congratulations.
Thank you for the support from Willians, my fellow choirmates, and my family.
Fantastic. Our next recognition goes to Dr. Ronak Patel. Just real quickly, Dr. Ronak Patel, if you can tell by the picture, he's the guy next to the tall handsome guy with hair. All right, bad joke. Uh, no, in, in true seriousness, Dr. Patel was just a rock star in regards to vaccination. He is our healthcare provider. Uh, contact, approximately a month ago, he came through for Fenton staff, he came through for the, for the Fenton communities, Wooddale and Bensonville. He is our contact and we would like to recognize him this evening with a proclamation. I will go ahead and read the proclamation. Unfortunately, Dr. Patel is, is at another school district, um, working on vaccination, but he will view this, uh, this recording. Whereas Fenton High School, School District 100, Bensonville School District 2, Wooddale School District 7, the Bensonville Park District, the Bensonville Public Library, and the Village of Bensonville have a vibrant partnership that serves students and families with excellent service and supports the contribution significantly to a highly qualified of life in the communities. And whereas, in the spirit, Fenton Community High School held numerous COVID-19 vaccination clinics led by Albertson's Jewel Osko, Dr. Ronak Patel. In partnership with the Bensonville School District 2, Wooddale School, School District 7, Bensonville Park District, Bensonville Public School Library, and the Village of Bensonville. And whereas the COVID-19 vaccination clinic could not have been possible without the selflessness and generous support of these municipalities and their leaders. And whereas Albertson Jewel Osko, Dr. Ronak Patel, was able to distribute thousands of COVID-19 vaccines to school and the community members in need during the 2021 events. Now, where therefore, we, the Fenton Community High School District 100, Bensonville School District 2, Wooddale School District 7, Bensonville Park District, and Bensonville Public Library, and the Village of Bensonville do hereby join in appreciation of the COVID-19 vaccination events led by Albertson's Jewel Osko. Dr. Ronak Patel, this important endeavor will possibly affect the lives and well-being of our communities more than we will ever know. Thank you sincerely, Dr. Patel.
All right, thank you, James. That's a very, uh, it's a very, uh, great proclamation there, very fitting, and it was great working with, uh, Dr. Patel. Um, I would like to take this opportunity, uh, to recognize all of our wonderful staff who demonstrated true initiative and fortitude for the hugely successful and smooth COVID-19 vaccine, vaccination rollout here at Fenton. I would espe- Excuse me. I would especially like to recognize Superintendent Antanco for his proactive persistence in searching and securing the vaccine doses for the staff at Fenton High School. And then having Fenton High School nominated once again to be the vaccination site for the Bensonville-Wooddale community. As a, as a direct result of his efforts, Fenton High School District 100 is the first school district in DuPage County to vaccinate all teachers and staff in the district, including all feeder schools, for those who wished to have the vaccine. But this accomplishment is not done alone. I would also like to, to recognize all of our wonderful staff, including the custodial staff, who made this possible. But especially Bruce Martin, Mary Timmons, Sam Benson, Jovan Lazarevic, Tom Cobal, Rick Cambick, and Jim Batson. A lot of planning, organizing, collaboration, calls, communication through the night went into this effort. I would also like to recognize, once again, our healthcare provider, Dr. Patel, for his efforts and collaboration. This success was not possible without Dr. Patel. It is truly remarkable how our team and staff came together for this first groundbreaking process in the vaccination rollout of a school district. It is no wonder that superintendents from other school districts came to Fenton High School to observe and learn. The flow and process was so successful that Fenton High School was nominated as the Bensonville-Wooddale Community Vaccination Site for those primarily 65 and older this pa- this past weekend. Once again, in close collaboration with the Bensonville and Wooddale municipalities, a smooth and efficient process was accomplished for something that has never been done in a school district before. I saw firsthand this weekend how truly appreciative those that received the vaccine were. Many stopped to say thank you and, and commented how efficient the process was and that we, and that we were able to se- secure these vaccines for those who wish to have it in our community. This at a time when unfortunately many parts of Illinois are struggling with supply and distribution. And in these past few days, we received numerous emails and comments regarding and appreciation regarding the, uh, the vaccine rollout. Uh, we just received one, here's just one example from, um, well, I'll just read it. Good morning. I'm not sure you remember me, but I am on the board of the Food Pantry. It is my understanding that you were the instrument that made it possible for the residents of Bensonville and Wooddale to get their vaccinations at Fenton. On behalf of us all, a great big thank you. With thanks, Rexine, um, from the Food Pantry Board. So that is just one example, and I just wanted to give a great shout out for all those, and also to those I didn't mention who, um, came together and ma- made this happen. And, um, again, a great big thank you. Um, so now we move on to public comments. Uh, James, do we have any requests for public comments?
We do, and Dr. Benson will read them. Thank you, Dr. Benson.
Okay.
Okay, the first one. Hi, my name is Talia Aguñano, and I use she/her pronouns. I'm a product of Fenton, class of 2013. I'm submitting this comment today to call on the board and more specifically, board leadership to spend time during the meeting to acknowledge the importance of Black History Month and the district's commitment to ensuring that accurate and honest black history is being embedded into the student's curriculum. It is one thing to be committed to diversity, equity, and inclusion. It is another to be committed to being anti-racist, addressing your implicit biases and understanding what it means to be committed to this ongoing continuous fight to make our district an anti-racist entity. Anti-racism is a process of actively identifying and opposing racism. The goal of anti-racism is to challenge racism and actively change the policies, behaviors, and beliefs that perpetuate racist ideas and actions. As a non-black person of color myself, I find myself in this ongoing learning journey of unlearning the historically inaccurate information that I learned in my coursework in regards to black lives and taking time to educate myself on how to be better and show up for my black friends, students, and colleagues in ways that they need, would like to see, and are proactive. I ask the board to take time to think about how you show up. Are you taking time to unlearn historically racist and inaccurate information that has been passed down in America's educational curriculum? Are you identifying racist, potentially anti-black policies that lie within our district? On another hand, have you taken time to reflect on how national news as it pertains to the unjust treatment of black lives play out in the district you have been elected to represent? It is not the job of black individuals to teach us, white and non-black people of color, how to be actively involved in the movement. It's up to us to willingly and intentionally do so. The lives and experiences of our black students, staff, teachers, parents, community members matter and are incredibly important. I call on the board to acknowledge the importance of this month and the need for it to be infused into curriculums year round. Public comment number two. Good evening, my name is Jessica Bango. My pronouns are she/her/hers, and I am the class of 2016 Fenton alum. To be a diverse high school that yearns for equity and to at the same time ignore the discrimination felt on Fenton's campus is an injustice to our community. This is now our seventh month submitting public comments. As the Fenton Advocacy Network, we have shared multiple firsthand accounts of discrimination. Yet you all continue to define Fenton with empty accolades and misleading data that try to portray Fenton as pristine and without fault. You all, as board members that represent Fenton, have failed to take accountability. There is no word that Fenton could ever attain that could repress or hide the apparent ineffectiveness of the policies in place regarding discrimination. As the board continues to be silent, we recognize that our goals may not be met with the current composition of the board. With that said, want to highlight the importance of the upcoming board election in April. To those listening and may listen later, your voice, I'm sorry, your vote is your voice. There are new candidates who are running the positions on board in April that are driven about transparency and conducting dialogue. The current board has failed to make decisions with the community's input. They have not taken the public's concerns seriously. This current board has ignored us for seven months and ignored a petition with 600 alumni and community member signatures calling for the creation and implementation of a diversity action plan. A word of advice to the board, it is illogical to create diversity and equity goals, agendas, and protocols for the community and student body and intentionally not include the community or student body in the creation of those plans. Somehow, this fall, it's gotten overlooked in the past seven months. To the current board, we have extended this invitation to conduct dialogue. Your continued silence contributes to the oppression of not only our group, but all students, past, present, and future. It's been seven months of submitting comments, but we refuse to give up on our goals. Thank you. Public comment three. Greetings, my name is Emma Butts. I am a 2016 alumni of Fenton and a member of the Fenton Advocacy Network. Fan and I have been working diligently to advocate for traditionally marginalized groups who have, are, and will eventually attend Fenton High School. We are going to continue to push the Board of Education to meet the needs of our highly diverse community. We would like to encourage the work we have been putting into our efforts to enhance our community, to be reciprocated by the board. This may look like reaching out to a fan to discuss goals and include us in the conversation to discuss the needs of our school. Our goals are as stated below. We will advocate for traditionally marginalized groups at Fenton High School and provide support to the previously mentioned community wanting to advocate for others. We will provide a voice to those who have been silenced and discouraged by discrimination through various platforms. We will encourage meaningful mandatory equity training among all teaching staff, administration, support staff, et cetera. We will encourage students to engage in workshops and address equity race and discrimination conducted by certified professionals. We will actively address the question, are the needs of traditionally marginalized groups being recognized and met? We will discuss current relevant and evolving issues involving justice and equity that affect traditionally marginalized groups. We will not be silenced, we will be heard. Our community deserves to be held with high regard and pride. Continuing to dismiss this prominent public outreach would be shameful and cold. Let me leave you with this statement by Sonia Sotomayor. Until you have equal education, we will not have an equal society. Thank you for your time. Okay, public comment number four. President Wedeman and members of the Board of Education, greetings from the Fenton Educational, uh, Education Association. I come to you tonight to address the resumption of in-person learning next month. Nearly one year since we left school, we now stand on the precipice of returning in person. The past year has been harder than any of us could have imagined. In addition to shifting our entire pedagogy to remote learning, we have had to rearrange our personalized and schedules while still trying to find innovative ways to meet our students' needs. The amount of new challenges we have faced has seemed endless at times, and now we face yet another monumental shift in our teaching and learning as we prepare to head back in the building. I cannot stress this enough, it has been our close collaboration with our administration that has allowed us both the success in the past year, as well as what we hope will be a successful return to the building. Our thanks to James, Jovan, Sam, and the rest of the administrative team for their leadership and collaboration over the past year. Meeting the challenges we have faced as partners and equals has allowed us to make the best decisions possible for all stakeholders. We know that we will continue working together as we surmount the challenges COVID-19 will continue to pose to us. And we are confident that the spirit of collaboration and collegiality will animate our relationship on all of our endeavors in the future. Our union's motto is working together to put students first. And over this past year, our collaboration with the administration has put this motto into action. This is not to say that there are not anxieties held by the staff about returning. The pandemic still rages, and the same questions of public health and safety have been with us for a year will persist in the reopening. The work of the Safety Committee has been vital in developing the safe reopening plan. So special thanks go out to Sam, Dan Latka, Aubrey Millman, Linda Santinello, and especially Jill Wisnewski for the countless hours they have spent putting together plans to keep our stu- staff, students, and community safe. We truly appreciate all you have done and will continue to do. And on that note of thanks, a heartfelt thank to you, the board, James, and the administration for working to make Fenton a vaccine site and offering the vaccine to all of our staff. This step is a crucial component of a safe and successful reopening, and we are very grateful that it was made so easy for us to show up and get vaccinated. The school's efforts and responsible messaging around the efficacy and safety of the vaccine are much appreciated. As you board members well understand, the Bensonville and Wooddale populations that feed in Fenton have been disproportionately affected by COVID-19. We encourage the board to communicate socially responsible, science-based messaging to your constituents in the community regarding the vaccine, social distancing, masking, and hand washing. It is incumbent on all of us to continue communicating the seriousness of this situation, as well as the safe response to it as we head back into school. In closing, we know the next phase of the pandemic saga will not be easy. In-person learning poses, poses a plethora of challenges and issues ranging from equity and pedagogy to practical issues of technology and instruction. We also know that through our continued collaboration, we will meet these challenges. Thank you for your time, Patrick Escobedo, President, Fenton Education Association. And public comment number five, uh, submitted by Jamie Minard. The following stories are test- testaments regarding acts of discrimination witnessed or experienced at Fenton High School, which were collected by the Fenton Advocacy Network. Stories shared here and at the past board meetings are firsthand accounts, personal experiences that had a meaningful impact on the writers who shared them. Please do not infer motivations other than a willingness to share or assume the identity of any of the participants. These stories are not intended to be accusatory or to imply individual biases. These stories are intended to reflect the greater Fenton experience of the contributors. I want to start by saying I categorize myself as a female. Due to that, I have experienced forms of harassment and discrimination for being female. I remember a time in Spanish class when I got up to turn in an assignment, I was wearing yoga pants, but regular underwear also. I walked past a boy, dated boy on purpose, and he proceeded to yell, "I hate when girls wear underwear with yoga pants." Obviously, the individual's talking about me, the whole class heard it. It was uncomfortable because this boy believed he had the right to express himself on how I dress and verbalize it to the whole class. Was embarrassed for the rest of the class, but still proceeded to wear whatever I wanted because that's my body and my life. He asked the teacher, did nor say nothing, submitted anonymously. The following story has been translated from Spanish. When I was a junior, I took chef's class. In that class, there were only a few Hispanics, about four of us. On one occasion, the teacher had us study something about how to take an order correctly. Since I did not know much English, I asked a friend how to say a certain word in Spanish, and the teacher yelled at us saying that we should not speak Spanish in our class, but only English because we were in America. She got angry with us. We just wanted to get out of that class and never see that teacher ever again. She so-called herself a teacher, but they shouldn't have racist people teaching. Submitted anonymously.
Okay, thank you, Sam. I would like to take this opportunity to thank Talia Anguiano, Jessica Bango, Emma Butts, Patrick Escobedo and Jamie Menard for your comments. Again, we want to interrate and make it clear that each and every board member here is unequivocally committed to and has always embraced inclusion, diversity and equity for students of color, students with disabilities, low-income students and the LBGQT plus students. This commitment to diversity, equity and inclusion is far-reaching at Fenton such as professional development, finance, technology, restorative justice, curriculum, instruction, student assistance and financial assistance, so that all students have access to all resources that the district has to offer under an umbrella of compassion. This is evident at each of our board meetings during our Equity Report. We know that our equity journey is challenging, enlightening and never-ending. We will not tire from this journey. Fenton is committed to this equity journey, which is all-encompassing and deep. Last year, the district initiated an Equity Audit, where a district equity leadership team has been developed and has been meeting. Currently, the team is creating action plans based on the audit. These action plans will be implemented. The Equity Journey is moving forward at Fenton. In addition, our staff is participating in anti-racist and anti-bias training. The board will also participate in the same training this month. We will continue to move forward in this journey. Lastly, I would also like to mention that it is truly painful to hear stories of students being discriminated against, bullied, ignored, shamed and/or profiled by other students and adults, specifically our LBGQT plus students. There is no room for bullying, bias to discrimination and hate at Fenton. As mentioned before, I am open to attending the activities you mentioned during public comments. Let us know when those will happen. Thank you. Now we move on to...
I'm sorry, could I make a comment on this? Could I make a quick comment?
Sure.
Thank you, Paul. I just want to say this is that, you know, I know that we have the conversation here at a response to, you know, these stories that we hear that are real for our students. And I believe that we are making as much effort as possible to deliver on our values of diversity and inclusion. And it is a journey, we keep saying that. And sometimes I think, you know, the students that are speaking here from the Fenton advocacy group, or alumni group, or network, I think they want to just be acknowledged. And I want to just acknowledge that myself to say that, you know, your stories aren't just going by the wayside. You know, first thing, I am listening. And I think our leadership here is listening. The other thing too is that, you know, maybe what we can do, I'm going to propose this and whatever way we need to decide on this, maybe next meeting. I would propose that we have an SDI Board Committee started to directly respond to these types of issues, just like we have a Policy Committee, just like we have a Finance Committee. If we really stand by this value of diversity, equity and inclusion, I'd like to propose that we have a committee for that. And I'd like to be on that committee.
All right, thank you, Kit. Now we move on to the District 100 informational items. James?
Sure. Our next topic is our Fenton Equity Report. So far, we have reported how we incorporate equity in our professional development such as anti-racist and anti-bias professional development, student clubs, curriculum and Dean's Department with Restorative Justice, Equity Through Financial Perspective. And this evening, we will have Dr. Benz Batson discussing equity and technology. Take it away, Dr. Batson.
Thank you, Mr. Anteco and Board. I'm here to discuss a little bit of technology through the lens of equity. So we've previously discussed the importance of equity in education and how every decision we make should be made through this lens of equity, looking at it as a, for every decision that we make and every act that we do, that we perform. Equity through technology is not a process. It's not an initiative. It's not some project or plan to complete. It's just the foundation of everything we do. First of all, I'd like to acknowledge this ongoing work has been progressing for years, long before I got here from a technology perspective. There are many people who've contributed to this work. At the risk of leaving somebody out, I do want to acknowledge Fenton's Technology Support Team. These include Mike Feeley and Yara Calatteck, our technical specialists, our data specialist, Brittany Ruddenberg, Minlee Wang, supporting classroom technologies and managing our duplicating services, as well as Lisa Olson, who is really the front line of our support to students in the Chrome Zone. In addition, our terrific instructional technology coaches, Mike Barago, Mike Baker, Sarah Safidi, provide valuable instructional technology support and coaching to keep our teaching staff on the leading edge of classroom technologies and they deserve recognition as well. Going back a bit, in 2017, the NCES, the National Center for Educational Statistics, studied this topic of equity and technology in what they call the EdTech Equity Initiative. They analyzed the importance of an equitable technology plan and the results mainly focused on access to technology. If you remember, this was looking at data from the prior two years, two years prior to that. And the one-to-one movement still hadn't really taken hold like it has now. One key finding was the value of having a computing device available at home. This led to a 12-point improvement on national mathematics assessments for students that had a device at home and also qualified for the National School Lunch Program, the free and reduced lunch. And actually produced a 21-point gain on that same mathematics assessment for those who had a device at home that didn't qualify for the National School Lunch Program. So in both cases, these students performed better if they actually had access to a device at home. Much of this study seemed to look at what was then described as the digital divide and we've all heard about that term. But of course, here at Fenton, we already were well into addressing the digital divide by 2017, having started our one-to-one program three to four years prior to that. And I would also suggest that there's more to equity and technology than just addressing this digital divide, while that is important. Beginning in the 2013-2014 school year, Fenton moved into a one-to-one environment, providing Chromebooks for every student and allowing them to use them both at school and away from school. These devices were supported by Title I funding, which is, as you know, is funding provided to support equitable access to education and is based on the number of students qualifying for the National School Lunch Program. These devices, combined with great professional development for the staff, began a transformation of the learning environment for all students. Students who before didn't have access to this sort of technology now had access 24/7, 365 days out of the year. In the years since that time, we've learned and improved our program, however. When we realized that the cost of repairs became a burden on students and their families, we knew this was not equitable and switching to a more durable Chromebook and providing four years of accidental damage protection to eliminate most of the repair and replacement fees that students were paying. In the last year of the old Chromebooks before we did this, those costs totaled over $40,000 in that one year. These were costs mostly passed on to the students in terms of repair charges. In the years since then, these costs are almost nonexistent and the hundreds of dollars a year for all students. And this is mostly a lost power adapter or something to that effect, equating to just a few dollars. To address the differing needs of students and providing more flexibility, we also provided students with convertible Chromebooks, as you can see in the picture here. These can function as a laptop or a tablet, giving additional flexibility in how they're used and how the students access that technology. In order to use these devices more effectively, over the last five years, we've leveraged over a half a million dollars in E-Rate funds to bolster support for internet access and distribute... And this, funds are provided to bolster internet access and distributed to assist districts based on the percentage of low-income students. Those funds have allowed us to improve our network Wi-Fi access for students and staff, improve network safety and security, as well as provide sufficient internet bandwidth to support learning. It seems like a half a million dollars is a lot of money and it is. So that's the funding that we received from E-Rate. We had to match part of that, but that's a tremendous asset that was provided to Fenton and allowed us to really bring equitable access within the building. So Title I is also used to support many educational applications and tools to support learning for all students and provide access to a broader range of learning technologies. Applications like WeVideo, Padlet, Equitable, NearPod, Divine Learning, Calendly and others have been added to the already common Google Suite for Education, Google Classroom and many other applications used daily by our students and staff. Along with these devices and improved infrastructure, monitoring and filtering systems were also put in place to keep students safe from inappropriate and dangerous websites, as well as monitor the students' activity to protect students from bullying, self-harm and other harmful behavior while using these devices. When students are identified with special needs, assistive technologies that help students communicate, provide visual or oral support and in general, provide other unique technology learning supports are provided to help all students to be successful. We didn't stop there. Several years ago, with the realization that families didn't have internet access, we partnered with Comcast to promote a low-cost internet option that provides high-speed internet for less than $10 a month into our families' homes. And when we realized that wasn't enough, even at that, in late 2019, we selected a Wi-Fi hotspot carrier that provided hotspots for a number of our students who otherwise didn't have the option of accessing internet from home. This was pre-COVID, this was something that we proactively did. These hotspots were provided at no cost to the students. When the pandemic forced us into remote learning, another batch of these hotspots were brought into the mix to help students who otherwise could not afford internet at home. Again, with no cost to the students. This was to help those students that are now learning all day using the internet access at home. And when remote learning became a longer-term reality this year, another partnership with Comcast, supported by the CARES Act, provided additional home high-speed internet for families who could not afford internet. This was a free service provided by Comcast and paid for through the CARES Act. And if that wasn't enough, a third batch of Wi-Fi hotspots were obtained using the T-Mobile 10 Million Project, again at no cost to those families. Finally, we looked beyond our school to provide more equitable access to families in our community by arranging for dozens of free laptop computers, provided by generous donation and incorporating technology informational presentations during several Padres Unidos meetings last year. So this is only the beginning. As we continue to evaluate every technology decision to ensure we are viewing these decisions through an equity lens to provide the resources that all students need to be successful. Thank you, and I'll entertain any questions you have.
Thank you, Dr. Batson. Our next presentation will be introduced by Principal Lazarovich in regards to civil discourse.
Thank you, Mr. Anteco, Board. You'll see a presentation here in a few seconds that talks, the students are actually going to talk about our civil discourse. And they're going to talk about the reasons why we decided to do this. And it really gives our students kind of true agency in going forward. So basically, these are, our teachers already have parameters that they set up for hearing students within the classroom and in our building. We, you know, we have those guidelines, we have norms that we set off in times within our, in our different meetings. But this opportunity, really working with teachers and working with our students, gives kind of that parameter and that understanding of making sure that everybody's understood. So I think Dr. Batson has it queued up, so we'll take a look at it here.
With all the events that have surfaced our country this year, a lot of discord has been created among many surrounding the topics of the pandemic, the Black Lives Matter movement, the recent 2020 election, and more recently, the Capitol insurrection. With all the discord that has been created, there's an exigency to discuss these topics among others so that we gain proper understanding of the events surrounding us and to learn from other people, even if they differ in opinions. That's why creating a civil discourse mission statement is important so that we can have respectful discussions of these events in school and learn from one another and encourage students to share their ideas in class. Every student has a right to their own opinion, but more importantly, they have a right to learn.
Hey, everyone, I'm Kyle and I'm going to tell you a little bit about the team of civil discourse and the people involved and my personal reason of why I'm involved. So to go down the list, we could start off with the students. Cecilia Flores, me, of course, Caroline Stadnik and Quinn Will Coxon. And then we have the administrators, Mr. Lazarovich and Mrs. Ward. And then we have some of the teachers, Mrs. Rajendraan, Ms. Taylor, Mr. Lottermann, Ms. Norris, Mrs. Bright and Mrs. Jackson. And we have the counselors, Mrs. Toh and Mrs. George Jacobs. So a little bit about me and why I did, and why I contributed to the team was, I really wanted to see a little bit of change because whenever I'd sit in class, I'd be a little nervous to speak about a couple of things. And when I saw this opportunity, I emailed Mr. George Jacobs right away and said, "Hey, can I get in on this? It seems really interesting to me and I want to be a part of it." And that's why I wanted to join the team and be a part of the thing because it's just something personal and something that I wanted to contribute and do my best.
Hi, my name is Caroline Stadnik and I was one of the four students that participated in coming up with the civil discourse statement for Fenton High School. The developmental process of the civil discourse statement consisted of having two meetings in the morning before school. Our first meeting was on November 20th of 2020, where we discussed memorable conversations and negative experiences that have happened in the classroom along with discussions about why it was important to have these conversations in the classroom in the first place. Teachers and students were both able to share and everyone participated in discussions. In order to come up with our own civil discourse statement, we looked at and referenced the McHenry statements for ideas. The teachers then were all split up into four breakout groups. Dark Blue, Light Blue, Dark Orange and Light Orange, having one student in each group. The blue team's primary focus was understanding during discussion, while the orange team's primary focus was behavior during discussion. From there, we all used a chart that contained the original staff's statements from the October 19th cohort meetings and tried to synthesize that into one statement per category. Each group had three categories that related to their primary focus. The purpose of this meeting was to discuss the importance for our statement at Fenton High School and decide on how we would use it and where. We also were trying to synthesize the statements already made into six statements concerning behavior during discussion and six statements concerning understanding during discussion. We were successful and were able to come up with those. On the second meeting, which was December 4th of 2020, was when all the blue team united in a breakout group room and the orange team were all united in a breakout group room. The goal was, for this discussion, was to be about to review the statements that the light and the dark team made in the corresponding color and to synthesize the statements even further to only have two or three statements within the color, so within the category. So it was orange and blue, so understanding and behavior. Then we all came back into one call and looked at which statements between the groups could have been combined and or synthesized and which ones we thought were the most important to add in our mission statement. The mission statement was something we all worked on together in one call to come up with. We wanted a message that was easy to understand and that summed up the bullet points below the mission statement.
Hello, my name is Quinn Will Coxon. And the goal of discussions here at Fenton High School is to learn from others and understand different perspectives of each and every single person. single person. This is our statement. In all discussions, we pledge to seek out different perspectives and respect people by supporting and encouraging their expressions. We pledge to demonstrate mutual respect by addressing each other by name and restating what that individual just said to establish common understanding. We pledge to support our opinions with evidence from reputable and unbiased sources. We pledge to use questioning to hold each other accountable to the topic and reflect on ideas presented. And last but not least, we aim to avoid generalized statements. For example, instead of saying things like, "You all think," try something new by stating, "One perspective I think this group has is." Thank you for listening, and enjoy the rest of your day.
So we obviously have that discourse, and we're going to put that out to our, through Bison Time, to all of our students and staff members as well. But as you can see, it was obviously something that was done jointly with teacher, staff, as well as administration to make sure that all voices are heard within the classroom and that we have some type of kind of boundaries and guidelines as we go forward. So that was it. Thank you.
Thank you, Principal Lazarovich. That was well done. Please thank all our students and our teachers for us. Thank you so much.
Yes, thank you.
Always a good way to have a conversation and really to, I love the pledges there. Moving on from also Dr. Batson, thank you for your presentation in regards to how we live equity through technology. There's a lot of work behind the scenes on that. It's not as handsome as other presentations, but we understand technology, and it's great to put technology in the hands of all of our students and families. Next up is pretty much our COVID-19 update. You can see the chart there, only have one chart this evening. We are still in substantial. If you look at the chart there, the arrows are pointing the right way, which is down, meaning that COVID-19 and the virus is on its way down. If you look, the majority of the metrics are minimal. We forecast that new cases per 100,000 was going to be difficult, but it's at 133 right now, and in about two weeks, that should also, that should get to moderate. So we need to continue watching these metrics from week to week. Moving on to vaccination, I know we discussed it a little earlier at the beginning of our meeting here, but when we are done here at Fenton, Fenton would have vaccinated 6,000, would have delivered 6,000 vaccines, which is just outstanding. We really, I think we lead DuPage and perhaps other counties in Illinois in regards to doing that. We were one of the first. So thank you, thank you for all the staff, all the folks that helped, the municipalities, school districts, for putting this massive colossal endeavor into play and really running a smooth operation. As President Wedeman mentioned earlier, we're receiving a lot of positive feedback from our community. To our hybrid plan last week.
Same. I know you can't, could I ask a quick question about the vaccine?
Sure.
Well done. It was like a well-oiled machine, like you guys had done that a time or two before, so it was very impressive. I just had a question. So I know the second round of vaccines is coming upon us quickly here for the first, the first round at least. What, do you guys have a plan in place? So let's say for various reasons, somebody cannot come in for their second vaccine, for whatever reason, they're not feeling well, or, you know, something came up and they can't do that second vaccine. Is there something in place so that that vaccine doesn't get thrown out? Or, you know, is there somebody that could come in and get their first round? Or, I don't know how that, you know, if there's a plan for that, if somebody, for whatever reason, can't make it for their vaccine?
That's a great question, Juliette. We're going to run that by Dr. Patel, who's running the show behind the scene. He's responsible for the actual violent vaccines. It was made very clear to us that the folks that signed up for the first vaccination, I'm assuming it's the staff vaccination focused on 1B and teachers, to commit, to commit to both doses. With that said, we know folks might not make it, there might be an emergency at home, something happened.
Right.
That will have to be, that individual will probably get ahold of one of us, whether it's Principal Lazarovich, myself, or Dr. Benson, and we will relay that question to Dr. Patel, give him that, the name, and he and Juul Osko Pharmacy will reach to that individual. With that said, are there any more vaccination plans for Fenton? We do not. Next vaccination is the second dose, this Friday. Once again, teachers and 1B individuals. And the next one is the community outreach, which is scheduled for Saturday, March 6th. So that's what I have right now. If you know of individuals who cannot make it, please send it my way, and we'll send it off to our health provider.
I'm assuming people will come, but I know, for instance, like somebody that I know is now on antibiotics and they can't take their second. So, you know, I was like, oh, wow, you know, I never thought about the fact that this particular vaccine is now held for them, and I wonder what happens to that? Does it get thrown out, or, you know, whatever? So I just wondered if there was a plan for that, but obviously, you know, I just wondered.
Yeah, please forward, we get name after the meeting, and we'll get it to our.
Nobody that we know at Fenton, I was, there's nobody.
Okay. All right. Watching this board meeting, if you know anyone who took a vaccine here at Fenton, not other locations, please let us know, and we'll get that to our healthcare provider.
Okay.
Thank you. Hybrid plan, real quick, as we mentioned, and you heard it, public comments, we are coming back March 9th. That first week, we're going to do it in a very safe way, in stages, on March 9th, students with IEPs, ELL students, 9th graders and transfer students who've never been in the building, who chose hybrid will start their hybrid schedule. On March 16th, along with those students, we're going to have 10th, 11th, and 12th graders, along with the group above, who chose hybrid, start that week as well. Now, we know there's a lot of information that will come out, and that will come out in a couple of days and a couple of weeks here, from Principal Lazarovich, as well as Dr. Benson. We are already communicating with staff. As you mentioned, we are busily working behind the scenes with our safety committee. They're taking the role, the lead role here, along with administrators, to make sure students matriculate back to school in a safe manner. Next up is just a real fantastic junior technician program. We received a generous donation and will undertake a new partnership with the Scooters Work in this Cogaland area. Students in the junior technical program will now have access to state-of-the-art technologies and hands-on opportunity service and dealership-style training. This partnership coincides directly with Fenton Mantras of Being College and Career Ready and perfectly fits into the Career Pathway Program. Additionally, two Fenton students will be chosen for a paid summer internship, exposing them to possible future career in this field. Mr. Drellashar is taking the lead role on this, and just wanted to quote him, in quotes, "It doesn't get much better than this." We are so excited about this program, just wanted for the board to know. Next up is some athletic updates. As you know, IDPH, as well as IHAs, are now working together to make, to bring back athletics this winter, spring, and summer. So here's the breakdown. For winter, basketball, as you know, has already started, badminton, dance, and cheer. For spring, we have soccer, football, and volleyball. For summer, we have baseball, softball, soccer, tennis, wrestling, track, and volleyball. We're going to continue to follow the IDPH safety guidelines. We have set up our live streaming ready to go. I know we were, we ran a little short last week, but we are ready to go with Dr. Benson's help and our athletic director, Mr. Becker. We're also allowing spectators to watch their students, so two tickets or two individuals per player, parents or guardian, will be allowed to come in and watch their sons or daughters play basketball. So exciting news. We received three FOIAs this month: technology requests, contract requests regarding our website, apps, and learning system contracts. We have given those requests, documents to the requestee. Second one is the 2021 retiree request from the Illinois Retired Teachers Association. They do this every year. Just wanted to know how many retirees we have here at Fenton. And lastly, attendance request from WLS. They want to know, I think they're doing a report in regards to attendance from the beginning of the year to present. In regards to our 2021-22 school calendar, which will be, we recommend the board approves during the consent agenda. Quickly, first day of student attendance is August 11th. Winter break will take place December 20th through December 31st. Spring break runs from March 28th to April 1st. Last day of school attendance is May 27th, which includes the emergency school days. I often get questions in regards, hey, look, who's responsible for building the calendar? Well, it has many things. Number one thing to remember is that ISBE mandates school district, public school districts to have 176 days of student attendance. At the high school level, as you guys know, we are, our schedule is built in first semester and second semester. The trick is, when you create a calendar for a high school, is that semester one should be balanced with semester two. So you take 176 divided by two, that's about 88 days in both semester. That's the key driver, okay? We want that equity within our calendar. For example, if I'm taking an Art One class and kid has taken the same Art One class, and I take it second semester, and let's say there's only 70 days of school, class days, classes that second semester, and he's having 102, there's, it's not the same. We want the semester's balance. I hope that makes sense. And lastly, in regards to spring break and winter break, that's really dependent on a couple of things. That's really the Regional Office of Education and DuPage, as well as other high school That's it for our report.
Okay, thank you, James. Thank you, Jim, for that presentation on equity and technology. And it was also good to see students involved with the Civil Discourse Statement Project. It was good to see students involved with that. Now we move on to the consent agenda. Do we have any questions or comments of any items on the consent agenda? Then if not, may I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
I will make the motion, Paul.
Thank you, Mary Ann. May I have a second, please?
I'll attend.
Thank you, Juliette. Roll call, please, Mary.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Jellwood?
Yes.
Vigo?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Po-Pom?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. Okay, the motion has passed. We move on to the auto shop exhaust replacement bid. Bruce, I believe that's yours.
Yep, thank you, Mr. Wedeman. Sorry, couldn't get it off mute there. Yes, as the board knows, I think we talked about this in our finance facility committee meeting regarding bidding this project out, and we did just that. However, we ran into a procedural irregularity, and due to that, we are recommending avoid any claim of impropriety to rebid the project. In essence, what happened was we received two bids in time. We received four bids at the public opening, two more bids we were unaware of that came in, but they came in in the timeframe that they were required to come in at. However, we didn't, weren't aware of that, so we didn't open them as required by law. So our legal counsel did advise us to rebid it going forward. So that's what we're recommending to do, to reject these bids and rebid the project.
Okay, thank you, Bruce. Then may I have a motion that the Board of Education moves to reject all bids for the auto shop exhaust replacement project?
I'll move.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second, please?
I'll second it, Paul.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howe?
Get down.
Vigo?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Po-Pom?
Yes.
Jellwood?
Yes.
Wedeman?
Yes. The motion has passed. We move on to the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission Intergovernmental Agreement. James, please.
Sure. Just want everyone to take a look at this beautiful graph here. Next slide, please, Jim. That says it all. Okay, what this is all about is really reducing the plane noise here in Bensonville and Wooddale. Next slide, please. Okay, so we would like the board, we recommend the board to continue and approve the intergovernmental agreement with the O'Hare Commission for many reasons. Years ago, Fenton was a recipient of a sound insulation from O'Hare or the ONCC Commission. The commission is actively trying to get federal government to pass another round of sound insulation for schools, including Fenton. That means real dollars for us. That's number one. Number two, Fenton is directly in the flight path of the Southern Runway, right here, right above the building, and you guys know this too, because when you're here, you've got to pause for a minute, wait for it to fly over, and we can continue the conversation. So we are, the commission is working on a flight quiet zone, which would disperse the nighttime noise and provide students with a predictable schedule of nights without overnight flights. That would be wonderful, because we know better sleep means better students. Lastly, Bensonville and Wooddale are some of the most heavily impacted communities by airplane noise. Having Fenton's vote on the ONCC helps amplify our efforts to quiet noise in our community. Once again, we're recommending that the board approve this agreement and this intergovernmental agreement. It's helping our vote count. There's approximately 150 members on this commission, and our votes definitely counts, especially when we team up with Bensonville, the Village of Bensonville, the City of Wooddale, District Two, District Seven, and now District Hundred. That's five votes in our favor.
Okay, thank you, James. Any questions? Yeah, this is definitely a worthwhile issue to be involved with here. So may I have a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution authorizing an amendment of the intergovernmental agreement relating to the O'Hare Noise Compatibility Commission as presented?
How does this change anything? What's the changes?
Could you say that?
Yeah, in terms of the changes in agreements, how does that change the, what's the changes in agreements? I'm sort of familiar with the, you know, this program where it's noise solution, and it's mostly subsidized, I think, by the aviation authority. So how does that work for us with the school?
Sure, with the agreement, it's basically a yearly agreement. Kid, we're just saying that, hey, look, we still want to put her up with the ONCC. We want to be involved, part of, we can have, in regards to the commission. If we don't agree, we will be off the table, okay? So we're no longer members anymore, and we're going to leave it up in their good hands. You know the story of Bensonville and Wooddale? They basically lined up runway right here, and it's time to put it equitably. Almers has to get a little bit, Park Ridge has to have a little bit, everyone has to share the noise, because everyone benefits from an airport. It shouldn't just be us that's getting more. That's the bottom line to it. I know the Village of Bensonville and the Village of Wooddale is working very hard to push out more equitable landing and taking off in different direction, not just our way. uh, uh, the noise, because everyone benefits from an airport. It shouldn't just be us that's getting more. That's the bottom line to it. I know the village Bensonville and the village of Wooddale is working very hard to, to to push out more equitable uh, uh, landing and taking off in different direction, not just our way.
I s- okay, so it's essentially, it, it gets us uh part of the conversation and decision-making.
Correct, and a vote.
Okay.
So I'll make the motion, Paul.
Thank you, Patty. May I have a second?
I'll have a second.
Thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Ting Po Pong?
Yes.
Jellwood?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, the motion has passed. We move on to the committee reports. Um, first one, Bensonville Community Foundation, uh, Juliette or Kit. Anything there?
Um, we had our meeting last month. We, we went through, um, you know, we had a good round of donations uh into the, uh, into the foundation. And right now, um, just to now, oh, and, and by the way, uh, I, uh, James, I, I would wanna uh talk with you about uh, the AP testing. So, um, I mentioned that to the foundation. Um, we could use some input on, on what exactly is needed, those needs. Um, right now, I think the, the, the foundation overall is, is looking to, to write out grants, so um, if anyone has a need, wants to make a proposal on uh, requesting a grant, go to the foundation website and, and make that request, and then uh we can bring it up to uh the board and vote on uh approval. So, uh, that's the biggest thing right now. I think we're, you know, we're, we're kind of at a surplus, so we'd, we'd be good to get some, some grant dollars out to the community.
Okay, thank you. Uh, finance committee. Uh, I believe. Mary Ann, unless you have something on it, me, next uh committee meeting won't be till the summer.
I have nothing. Thank you, Paul.
Okay, uh, next one, I A S B delegate. Um, as you all know, we will have our D E I training this Saturday along with other boards. Uh, the Saturday morning. And the only other thing is, is I participated in the I A S B DuPage Division Focus Group. Um, there are two meetings in the, in the last two weeks. I don't have the exact dates they were, but it was in the last two weeks, uh, regarding uh procedural improvements in the I A S, I A S B DuPage Division. Um, that's all I have. Land meeting?
It's gonna be this coming Friday.
Okay, then we'll hear about it next time. Thank you, Leo. Uh, Nedsec, Leo or Patty?
I was there, but James was there.
Oh, I'm sorry, that's right. Okay.
Sure, the, the focus is really uh gearing up for the budget, um, and uh for Nedsec. Did you also mention land yet, Paul?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, Len's next meeting, I, sorry about that, is this Monday, the twenty sixth. The focus will be the state budget uh given out by the governor. So that will, uh, that will take place on uh February twenty sixth.
Great, thank you. Okay, and then the policy, I believe the next policy committee meeting will have that in June, I believe. Unless Patty or Kit, you have anything on else?
Nope, that's correct. June.
June, yeah. Okay. Then our next board meeting will be in person. That'll be really good, I think. Um, it'll be great to be back in a in-person meeting again. At seven PM on March seventeen. If no one has anything further, then.
Paul, I, I might have something that I wanna add.
Sure.
So, um, I guess that uh in Bensonville, Mohawk Terrace subdivision was bought out by M L Realty to develop uh some commercial buildings, I guess. And, um, it was like a, I guess, like a hundred and seventeen, a hundred and seventeen residential homes were bought out by by this realty company. Um, apparently, um, in compliance, I mean, everybody complied. It wasn't, um, you know, a forced compliance or anything like that. But it did affect a hu- a hundred and seventeen of our Bensonville residents and apparently about twenty-five of our Fenton students as well. And, um, I guess it's put it like a big surge on our on people trying to find homes in the Wooddale Bensonville area. Obviously, not everybody is looking to, you know, buy again in this area, I would assume. But, um, I've had, and I'm sorry, uh, James, um, that I haven't gotten, I wanted to call you about this, because I've gotten a couple of phone calls, but uh, time did not allow, so I'm sorry to be dumping this in everyone's lap right now, but, um, I, I've gotten a couple of phone calls, and I don't know if this is, um, the legality of this, or if this is something that we could, you know, what we could do about this at all, and maybe this is something that we could talk about next month, or that you could research, or, you know, we can discuss as a, as a board next month. But I guess some people are, um, having a hard time finding a homes within their price range or homes because of the influx of people trying to find them at this point. Um, so they're concerned about their kids being able to attend Fenton, I guess. And so I guess the question is whether they could be grandfathered in these kids, or if they Other schools have had to deal with something like this, with a big buyout of a big subdivision. Um, and in, if, if there is some sort of a precedent for that in other school districts, or if you've heard of anything like that, or it could be researched. And we can discuss later.
Juliette, I will research that with, with the village of Bensonville and report at the next board meeting.
Okay, and again, I apologize for throwing this at, at you, um, but time just didn't really allow me to, to, to get back to you, and I, I do apologize for that. But it was something that I thought we could maybe discuss all together or whatever.
Definitely important there. I'll do some research and, and report it again. Thank you for sharing.
And you can call me, or, you know.
I will.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thank you, Juliette. Yeah, I, I do know that there's, there was an ongoing e- effort to, um, purchase those homes for, for uh commercial development.
Right, and I don't, and I don't know all of the details of when the move out is for everybody, or, you know, I'm not exactly sure all of that, but something to look at.
Okay, great.
Is that something where as a district, we Yeah, is that something where as a district, we, you know, we look at the, the students that are, that could be infected and, you know, provide some support, yeah?
Okay, then may I have a motion in a second to go into closed session for the purpose of the appointment, employment compensation?
I'm sorry, I just, oh, I'm sorry. I'm, I'm bad timing and all, I'm sorry about that. Um, I just realized we're in new business, but I, I do wanna make a motion to uh consider uh creating a committee, uh, an S D E I committee uh to our board.
That, that's something we can add for, um, uh, new business.
Right, but we're in new business, right?
Right, yeah.
Okay.
So.
And so I'm making a motion to, uh, to, to consider or create an S D E I committee for our board.
Kid, kid, I think it's important to have a proposal for, uh, I think where Paul was going to is perhaps a new business at the next board meeting. You could lay out a proposal, how it would look like, uh, how many members there are, uh, and then go into a, a motion. We could work on that together uh to have a final decision.
Sounds good. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, um.
I'd like to make a motion that we go into closed session.
I get, I got it.
Okay, all right, we're back on track. Compensation, discipline, performance, or specific employees of the public body or legal counsel for the public body, including hearing testimony on a complaint lodged against an employee of the public body or against legal counsel for the public body to determine its validity. However, a meeting to consider an increase in compensation to a specific employee of a public body that is subject to the local government Wage Increase Transparency Act may not be closed and shall be open to the public and posted and held in accordance with the act five I L C S one twenty slash two C one and collective negotiating matters between the public body and its employees or the representatives or deliberations concerning salary schedules for one or more classes of employees. Five I L C S one twenty slash two C two. Uh, Jackie already made a motion. May I have a second, please?
I will second.
Okay, thank you, Mary Ann. Roll call, please.
Peyton Howe?
Yes.
Ramirez? Ramirez?
Junior Key?
You're muted, Jackie.
Yes.
Good.
Yes.
Jellwood?
Yes.
Figueroa?
Yes.
Regal?
Yes.
Weedman?
Yes. Okay, Jim, let us know when we
Can we?
I'll talk to you later.
Too late, Patty.
Okay, you're back.
That's my middle manager.
Okay, now I know something for me. All right, then, may I have your motion and a second to adjourn?
I will make that motion to adjourn, Paul.
Thank you, Mary Ann. Thank you, Jackie. Roll call, please.
Hilton Hall?
Yes.
Jallowick?
Yes.
Gugurua?
Yes.
Rego?
Juliette.
Oh, she's frozen.
She's in a better shape. Juliette.
Juliette?
She is frozen.
Yeah.
Ramirez?
Yes.
Tingpo Pong?
Uh-oh.
Oh, there he is.
Gotcha on their phone, darn kids.
Mary?
Yes.
Oh, did you say my name?
Yes.
Oh, okay, yes.
I don't know what we want to do about Juliette.
She said, I just saw it, she left the meeting. So maybe she got frozen and is getting out. I don't know, maybe to get back in.
You got a quorum for adjournment.
Yeah, well, we, the motion has passed, so we are out. So take care, everyone. And hopefully we won't get too much more snow. And next time, we will all see you in person.
Okay. Good. Good night, everybody.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, everyone.
Good night, folks. All right.